Called to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission. The record show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah.
Thank you, President Decker. There is one thing to add. Under Administration Reports, we will add an item number three to review the expanded FDIC Insurance Program, and Deputy City Administrator Carlson will handle that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah on the amended Order of Business? I'd look for a motion on the amended Order of Business.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the amended Order of Business with a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to discuss? Hearing no discussion on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We do have one timetable item this evening. We'll move into the non-timetable, and that is Administration is up first, and the first item up is a proclamation for Manufacturing Day, and we have a guest that would like to speak on Manufacturing Day. Ms. Roller.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. And I'm Sue Roller from Baker Boy, and I'm representing the various manufacturing companies in Dickinson. I'm here today to ask for your support of our area manufacturers. The city of Dickinson is home to over 10 manufacturers who produce and sell products on the global stage, and together we employ about 1,300 employees, and we're all growing, be it cabinets, aerospace parts, air separators, oil and gas equipment, refined petroleum, or magic green donuts, which I hope you had a sample of. Area manufacturers are creating great products and great career opportunities. This next week, on October 9th, the area manufacturers are coming together to host a Manufacturing Day. It's at the Bijou Activity Center. There'll be over 500 area high school students that will visit and learn about manufacturing career opportunities, and some of these would include welding, marketing, human resources, IT, R&amp;D, engineering, accounting, maintenance tech, and production assistance. So what we are asking is for you to proclaim, or have proclaimed a resolution proclaiming October 9th, 2019, as Manufacturing Day in the city of Dickinson.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Roller. Any questions for Mrs. Roller?
Thank you for the donuts. Can you ask Mr. Moose why we don't get them monthly?
I'll pass that on.
All right. Thank you.
And if you would wish to come to Manufacturing Day, it is next week, Wednesday, from 8:30 to 3:30 at the Bijou Activity Center. It's a fun time.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
I will go ahead and read the proclamation. "The city of Dickinson, North Dakota, proclamation: Manufacturing Day in Dickinson. Whereas the city of Dickinson has a strong history as a community supporting manufacturing and approximately 1,400 stable sustained jobs that manufacturers provide. And whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of innovation in our economy, and manufacturing firms fund most domestic corporate research and development, and the resulting innovations and productivity growth improve our standard of living. And whereas manufacturing also drives U.S. exports and is crucial for a strong national defense. And whereas many opportunities exist for Dickinson area residents to utilize their skills and talents in manufacturing in order to improve their lives and those of their loved ones. And whereas manufacturing diversifies the local economy, therefore bringing sustainability to the community. And whereas manufacturing is a significant creator of new wealth by means of sales outside of our area and outside of the state. And whereas over 1,200 North Dakota companies provide excellent careers in manufacturing for over 26,000 people and are adding new jobs every day." Now, therefore, I, Scott Decker, President of the Board of City Commissioners of the city of Dickinson, do hereby proclaim October 9th, 2019, as Manufacturing Day in Dickinson, and encourage all citizens to consider the positive impact of modern manufacturing on their lives and its contribution to the success of Dickinson. Stark County, North Dakota, and the United States of America. Commissioners, if you would, I would look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor of approving this proclamation, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Steiner, you'll pass that down. Mr. Gah. And thank you for everything that you do in our community. It does stabilize our community. The manufacturing base in this community stabilizes us through the commodities and ups and downs, and has always been a cornerstone to our success as a community. So, thank you again. Okay, we'll move on. Our 2020 tax levy. Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. I'm presenting the second and final reading of ordinance 1685 of the upcoming 2020 annual appropriation and tax levy. And just to reiterate, the general fund is in balance with an amount of $20,353,427, and this is an increase of $1,161, or 5.71 percent over 2019. There has been no change to the ordinance since last reading and public hearing. Staff is recommending final passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson? Commissioners have no questions for Mrs. Carlson. I will open up the public hearing. If any citizen wishes to come forward, please state your name if you have any concerns or comments on the 2020 tax levy ordinance. Anyone from the public? Anyone with any concerns on the 2020 tax levy ordinance? This is ordinance number 1685. Seeing no one from the public has any concerns on ordinance 1685, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions or comments on the tax levy ordinance? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on ordinance number 1685? Hearing no comments or questions for staff, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on ordinance 1685. Mr. Gah, we have three reports.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. I'll take the first two. The first one, you have letters in your packet from the Southwestern District Health Unit to some retailers. Annually, they do compliance checks for tobacco and making sure that retailers sell only to those over 18 years of age. Unfortunately, during their checks, four businesses did not pass. They did sell to minors, the minor that was coming in to do the check. So therefore, we will send them letters advising them that they have violated the policy, the ordinance, and they will receive a $150 fine and a one-day suspension. So they will, that day will be October 18th. There is an appeals process, but that's, this is the first step. The four businesses are Lucky's Express at 450 12th Street West, Scenic General at 325 15th Street West, Vapes at 927 West Villard, and Super Pumper at 1554 West Villard. And again, we'll send letters out to them later this week. Then, one little thank you note here in relationship to the Southwest grants. Thank you for your generous contribution to the Catholic Workman Hall for our kitchen update. It's greatly appreciated. The response to our request for donations was also excellent. We hope that when you're in need of a fine dining facility with excellent food, to have a meeting or a party, you will consider using this handicap accessible facility. And this is from the Taylor senior citizens.
Before we move on to Mrs. Carlson's report, any questions for Mr. Gah on the tobacco compliance checks?
Mr. President, I just found it interesting that all of the failed compliance checks did ask for an ID.
I saw that.
So, I think that's just interesting to note that I'm not sure if people just aren't reading the birthdates correctly, or if they're just not actually paying attention to what the birthday actually is.
I know some of the retailers were talking about installing the software on their, I don't know at what point they are, but where you'd have to actually insert the ID before the cash register would work. And I would, I guess, encourage our retailers of tobacco products and alcohol products to go that route, because if that prevents some oversight, like you said, somebody asks for an ID and just kind of glances at it and then just proceeds anyway, if that software is there where you actually have to put the...
Might be cheaper in the long run if you get caught.
In the long run.
Absolutely, and I think, you know, the business owner is the one that truly suffers. And so they can do all the training necessary, but if your staff is not compliant with state law, you know, you're really limited, so...
Again, that's why, for me, I would encourage our retailers to look into that software. Any other questions for Mr. Gah or comments?
What does the suspension consist of? Tobacco cell suspension?
Yes, they just cannot sell tobacco for one day is the minimum, and that's what we'll go with in this case.
Okay. All right.
Okay, and we'll move on to Mrs. Carlson. You have a report for us.
Thank you. Yes, this was added on to the agenda, and you have a copy of my memo and the attachment. I wanted just to briefly let you know what's been going on. So with our agreement, when we work with the bank every six months, we go over what we have in the city, how our products are doing, and what we're doing. And there is a new product that came out, and it's called the Demand Deposit Marketplace. It's an opportunity with this program to expand our federal deposit insurance coverage from just a one-time $250,000 per bank per account to multiple bank accounts to multiple insurance protection. So with that, just for the public, the Demand Deposit Marketplace program is offered by our FDIC insured bank, which is American Bank Center, as an option to sweep any amount on deposit that is agreed upon between the city and the bank. The funds are deposited into deposit accounts at multiple receiving banks in a manner designed to remain with the $250,000. So each bank account that you put in, each one would, at each bank would be $250,000 coverage. And then, this money is still liquid, it's still our money, we still work with American Bank to withdraw whatever we need to do on that, and we still earn interest on our account. So, long and short, it's just an extra piece of paper with a statement that lists the receiving banks, and it reduces some of our pledged money that goes. So it's a win-win situation for both the city and the banking. I just wanted to let you know about that. If you have any questions, I can answer that.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on this added feature, I guess, or benefit at...
Is there any cost to this?
No, no cost.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you again, Mrs. Carlson.
Thank you.
We'll move on to engineering. We have a drinking water SRF application.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This item was spawned from some discussion we had at budget meetings earlier this year. We have an ongoing project for a South State Avenue water main construction for which the city received a grant back in 2015. That grant covers 65 percent of the construction costs. This would be a loan that could cover the remainder of the city costs on that project. This is through the North Dakota Department of Health, now known as the Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ. The loan, like I said, could cover the remaining 35 percent of construction costs along with design engineering and right-of-way costs. This questionnaire would be our first step in applying for the loan. Depending on if it meets the criteria that the DEQ has laid out, we would have to then apply for the loan, retain bond counsel, like we've done for Clean Water SRF projects on the sewer side. To give a little history of the project, there's a consultant here, Carl Jackson with KLJ, who the city retained back in 2016 to begin the design of the project. He's in the audience and could give a short description of where the project's at right now, if you could come up. Mr. Jackson, thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Mayor and Commissioners, again, Carl Jackson with KLJ. Craig and I met for a little while before the meeting tonight, and thought it would be a good time to give you an update on this project that's been a couple of years in the making. And so, also, we agreed that it might be a good time to introduce myself, since I'm kind of a new face for all of you. So, I'm a Dickinson native, and I went to NDSU, but then lived in Billings, Montana for nearly 20 years, and moved back to Bismarck this summer. And so, I'll be KLJ's representative, helping with client services, client relations with the city of Dickinson moving forward, and I look forward to working on this project and working with you on other projects moving forward. So, State Avenue Water Main. Just a reminder, it's a 12-inch water main. Excuse me, you can see it on the map here, generally going from Second Street to Eighth Street. The project will primarily be constructed outside of the road section. It'll be on the east side of the road. We're taking care to avoid or minimize disruptions to access points and cross streets, and so we'll be boring beneath those intersections and major approaches to Camp on the Heart and whatnot.
Boring underneath the Heart River?
Boring underneath the Heart River. So, the design is complete. Design was complete in 2018, and right, we're in the middle of right-of-way and easement negotiations. There are primarily only three property owners affected by the project, and one of the three has already signed the agreement. We're meeting this week with the other two, and so we'll keep Craig and others updated as that progresses. The intent is to bid it this winter and then start construction next year, funding dependent, making sure we get all our ducks in a row with funding agency requirements and whatnot. So that's the long and short of it. I'd welcome any questions you have. Otherwise, that's the update for today.
Any questions for Mr. Jackson? I guess I have one. Does that add any extra capacity if there's future projects in that area?
That's the major impetus, is looping a significant part of town that does not currently have looped water lines. And so, this 12-inch line would tie in to existing lines on the north end, south end, accommodate currently platted subdivisions that are there, but also accommodate growth for future developments that might occur.
There is a joint project that we have had discussions with the Park District about across the road that possibly could use some water.
And I'm not sure exactly where that project is, but we are going across Eighth, and so it'll extend and terminate on the south side of Eighth.
That'd be a good location.
And then allow for tie-ins beyond that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
President Decker, I guess what we're asking for today is just approval to submit the questionnaire application to the Department of Environmental Quality.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kubis.
But wouldn't obligate the city or guarantee approval of the loan.
You're just basically starting the process.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kubis?
Mr. President. I'm over. We have approved the middle of application.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the middle.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Kubis? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kubis, you have a concrete stabilization agreement.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. The next item is an agreement that would fall under our 2019 street budget, and it's with a company called Concrete Stabilization Technologies. They go by CST Technologies. And what they do is they inject foam into the subgrade and beneath the concrete pavement. We've talked about this at areas like Westridge Drive. This is kind of a, I'd call it a pilot project. It's the minimum amount of work that this company would mobilize to Dickinson to do. Essentially, that $65,000 project dollar amount that we have in the memo and in the agreement as well. We've identified several areas. We'd like them to try their product out and see how it performs. We have a two-year warranty on the work, and so just off the top of my head, a few of the areas that we've looked at with them is an approach slab on the Heart River Bridge on State Avenue that we were looking at before. This approach slab has been in place for close to 30 years, and it just continually settles a little bit. They've done a lot of work on approach slabs like that. So that was one area. This is the south side of the Heart River Bridge. Of course, we've had these settling water valves and manholes in different areas of town, so we've identified a group of those that we'd like them to try their product out and lift those settled concrete collars, we call them. There's a concrete street in North Dickinson on Fourth Avenue East that, again, it's one of those areas where it looks like a manhole is coming out of the street, it's actually the street settling. I think it'd be a good application for their product. And they're set up to do this project still this year. Obviously, the weather doesn't look great outside, but their only limitation is really that the ground isn't frozen. So I think we still have, even though it doesn't look good, we still have probably six weeks before that happens, so that would fit into their schedule. With that, I'd open it up to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis?
Mr. Kubis, how long till you know if that product is working or not? I know you said we have a three-year protection, but, I mean, what is, what's the long range for that product?
Well, I think the long range, in my opinion, would be for the life of the pavement. Initially, we anticipate it's going to work perfectly, and it'll raise that concrete up to where it needs to be. I think the first indication is really going to be next spring, see how things hold in place. But then, like I said, they have a two-year guarantee on this product, that if it does settle, they can come back in, or they will come back in and lift that pavement back Initially, though, I think the first test will be this spring after frost comes out of the ground to see if we have major movement that's really concerning. It's a product that many other cities use, so seems like where we have those concrete issues, this would be a cost-effective way to do it, so it's gonna be getting our toes wet, so to speak, with this technology.
Now, the bridge entrance on the south side of the heart is a little bit shifty, depending on the weather, so... Any other questions for Mr. Kubis? There are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the concrete stabilization technologies agreement.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kubis, we have a 2020 Millin overlay award.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. Last week, on September 25th, the city received five proposals to provide engineering services for the 2020 Millin overlay project. The selection committee met, and that committee consisted of Public Works, Director Zurov, Assistant Engineer Marshak, myself, and Commissioners Frederick and Trustum. We met last week to review these proposals. All five of the proposals met the requirements of the RFP, and I'd have to add, just on a personal note, that all five of them were really good, and it was a difficult decision for the selection committee. After we had discussed the proposals, the committee had decided to recommend award to KLJ engineers. We had noticed that KLJ promoted a cost-conscious approach to their design, some innovative design techniques, and a new management approach in our recommendation to award to KLJ. We've notified all five of the consultants that they were either awarded or not awarded, or recommended to be awarded or not awarded this project, and that the final decision would lie with this commission this evening. Our next step would be to enter into negotiations with KLJ if they were recommended for award. If not, we would have the right to go to the second ranking firm in our rankings. With that, again, I'd open it up for any questions.
How much was the bid? How much was the low bid?
It was a proposal taken on qualifications and expertise. So what we'll do now, like I said, we'll enter into negotiations with KLJ, and if we can't come to a successful negotiation, we would step back and re-enter into negotiations with the second-ranked firm.
Thank you, Mrs. Kubis. Any additional comments, Mr. Frederick or Mrs. Trustum?
No.
I would just add that, you know, one thing we discussed is, many years ago, doing engineering work in Dickinson, we had one contractor, where now we, you know, we have a great group of companies that makes it competitive, and that I think they challenge each other, so we're very thankful to have five great proposals, and I think we were very happy with all of them, and I think we're looking forward to working with KLJ.
Right. Any questions for the selection committee? There are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the engineering selection.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have about three minutes, Mr. Zurov. All right. You have a consideration to approve a purchase of a bucket truck.
That's correct. Thank you, President Decker and Commission. Tonight, I have one item. It's our bucket truck, to approve purchase of a Versalift bucket truck for $132,162. I guess I'll give a little history. The current bucket truck we have is a 1985 model, which was purchased, used, and was significantly damaged last year, and definitely in need of replacing. Both the fleet and the street division have looked at different trucks and different buckets, and public works have looked at different, what we need, because there is quite a variety of need between forestry, water, street, and everything else. So we put all those together, and we've received prices from Altech and Versalift, who can both meet what we put together for specifications. Versalift does have their unit available on the, it used to be the National Joint Power Trust, now it's called Sourcewell, and that total price is, as I said, $132,162. This truck, as you are aware, was not originally budgeted for 2019, but for commission approval, it was purchased in place of our snow blower, which was moved to the 2020 budget. Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions for Mrs. Zurov? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the purchase of the bucket truck.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Zurov? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. About three minutes? Right on time. All right, we have a 5 o'clock timetable. It is a public hearing for Renaissance Zone project for Charbonneau Car Center, and city planner Josephson. Mr. Josephson, you're going to be making the presentation.
Yes, and also Terry Dvorak, the applicant, is here today. This is a request for a Renaissance Zone project located at... This is a request for a Renaissance Zone project located at, located at 431 West Villard Street. Charbonneau has talked about moving their service center over there. It would be their quick-lube and service center. There's a vacant building there that used to be, it's a sign company, and before that it was a, it was a gym. And what they're proposing to do is to remodel that building and also, and expand it, and that would be their center. And as I said, Mr. DeVorek is here, and he may want to give you some details about that. The, just to let you know, this meets the state requirements for a Renaissance Zone project. The 50% of the true, the full and true value of the property is $282,700. The estimated cost of the project, they're estimating between $500,000 and $600,000. This meets the, it meets the objectives in the city's Renaissance Zone plan, as well as in the comprehensive plan for the city of Dickinson. Both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. And as I said, if you want to hear from the applicant, he is here in the audience tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions for Mr. Josephson on this Renaissance Zone application?
And I should add, this is the fourth project that we've had.
It is.
We've had this year.
Putting you to work, Steve.
Probably haven't run it in four in five years.
All right. If there are no comments or questions for the applicant or Mr. Josephson, I will open the public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to come forward, has any comments or questions on the Renaissance Zone project for Charbonneau Car Center, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your comments or your concerns. Anyone from the public? Anyone have any concerns or questions on the Renaissance Zone project for the Charbonneau Car Center? Seeing no one has any concerns or comments on this Renaissance Zone project, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further comments, discussion? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on this Renaissance Zone project.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve, a Mr. Steiner, and a second by a Mr. Frederick. Any further discussion or questions?
Oh, just nice to see the program being utilized this year.
Yes. That was the whole purpose of putting these blocks into use, and there were so many that were just sitting there not getting used, year after year.
Right. And President Decker, Commissioners, one of the things that the city did was, when we were able to expand it, we saw a need along West Villard, and so we expanded along West Villard, and this is the second project along West Villard that's been approved this year.
I didn't think of a couple others that would...
Wonderful.
It looked wonderful. But that is great news. Thank you, Mr. Josephson. So we have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We will go back to planning, and Planning Director Hadley, you have a final plot for the West Ridge Third subdivision.
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. For West Ridge Third, which is a replat of West Ridge Second, excuse me, I believe it's Resolution 30-29, and had a hearing through the Planning Commission on September 18th with no public opposition. Did have some conditions of approval. The, limit the total number of units on the, within the third addition, and that would be the 63 total units, and it's based on a sewer capacity. And that's on the 23 lots as proposed. Staff at that time recommended approval, and would recommend that the city commission approve this Resolution 30-2019. The development agreement will be on your next agenda, which will outline the conditions of approval on the timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley? There are no questions or comments on 30-2019. I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions on 30-2019? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. On the final plot for West Ridge Third subdivision. Next item up is building and code enforcement. We have a year-end, year-to-date report. Mr. Schwint?
President Decker, Commissioners, like you just said, year-to-date report. We're having a good year, as the numbers will show. Our commercial structures are up significantly. Our single-family, we're at 59 right now. Last year at this time, we were at 51. Total for last year was 56. In addition to that, since we took on the manufactured home inspections, we do have six of those also. That hasn't been factored into this chart yet. Obviously, with the increase in structures, the values also go up, as it's stated there on the chart. In addition, in your packet is, this is a summary of what you have in your packet, the 64 pages that I'm sure you're going to go through tonight. It breaks down what our department actually does. Our alterations have also picked up a little bit. Commercial is down. Miscellaneous permits are definitely up. We have a lot of people coming in. I guess there's no way to put a pulse on what sets people on doing what they want to do. A lot of people are staying in their homes and improving. Again, the downturn of the oil, we had a lot of people leaving, I think, and actually when that stopped, everybody, the people that are actually stayed here are improving their structures or building new and selling and getting a good value with their existing At the end, we collect fees for other departments. Our permit fees are significantly up, connection fees, as you see, previous year-to-date was 196. We're at 303 right now. Petitions are up slightly. Miscellaneous is down, but the overall totals are, we're at 707, 644, where we were at 404, 206 last year. One thing, we get asked a question of what exactly we do when we actually issue a permit. Well, when a permit comes in, we meet with the public. Somebody, they will bring in plans. We will review those plans. That's a factor that you really can't put a time on. That's something that you won't see in this. Generally, once we get the plans, it's a, on a residential house, for instance, it's a two-hour plan review just for that structure. We go through the process, checking the lots, making sure the structure is placed. We don't have any issues with easements. We work with the engineering department as far as placement with the driveway, and the engineering department will do the sewer and water coming into the structure. On a residential structure, we average it's 14 inspections for that single-family structure, barring that there are no failed inspections on that property. In addition to the building permits, we have our code compliance section. What that covers is zoning regulations, unsafe structures, RV parking, no building permit. All those, to date, right now, we're at about 1,165. That's initial contact, so that's, we count that as one. Until the end of the year comes, sometimes we'll actually touch that two or three times. Or in trying to tear down a structure, I mean, we haven't even touched some of those this year. I know there was a issue with, we do have a number of issues with structures in our town, where hopefully we'll work with Haley this winter or Christina Winkle to get those structures down like we need to. We do have to wait on one of the properties. We couldn't do anything because of the taxes. The taxes will be up this month, so we'll be able to move forward with that. Somebody can come forward and pay those taxes and have that property, or we can come in and do what we need to do to clean up that neighborhood. It's been a long time coming. One final note is, we, I had an inspector who actually left the city. He was with us for seven, over seven and a half years, Tom Ely. I want to just give him a shout-out, thank him for his time with us. It's going to be hard to replace the 40-plus years of the experience that he brought to the city of Dickinson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schwint. I do have one quick question. Any structure that, where there was, say, a criminal activity, and it's basically, I know there's one structure in town, it's, it's had a notice on it for you at least two years now. Do you deal with that, that process of, if there was something happening in there for the reason that it has been basically set to be off limits?
Are we talking on the one over on Seventh? We, I just talked to the owner, actually, yesterday, and the idea was, he had made some promises to clean up the property. We will be conducting another inspection. We felt the structure was unsafe to occupy, and he stated to me that he really hasn't done anything to it, that he plans to sell it. So our notice will not come off because of nothing has been done to it. So that, again, with working with legal, as far as that process, what we need to do with that structure. But it is an unsafe structure per our code, and we'll act accordingly.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Schwint? I don't, this is the year-end report, which we don't, our year-to-date report. We don't need to...
Maybe if you just want to touch on, if there's a complaint where we have a nuisance house, what the process is. I think the public may want to understand that a little bit better, because I think we just can go over there and tell them to clean it up, and it happens the next day, so...
Yeah. I wish that would happen. Generally, we will get a complaint or we'll notice a property. We are out in the city. We are driving around. If we do see a property that is noncompliant, we do stop. The first step would be acknowledge the situation, take photographs, try to get ahold of the owner, and send out a notice. We ask for permission to enter the property. Generally, it's, it is granted, surprisingly so. We actually conduct an inspection and then make those notes, similar to the property that Mayor Decker just stated. We were allowed to go into that property. We did have to suit up for that one, but it was bad. We sent out those notices. Generally, a property owner will comply, and they call us back for a follow-up inspection. If we, the follow-up inspection actually fails, we do work with people to actually meet compliance. If that's not going to happen, then we get ahold of legal and move that process forward. If that process goes forward, their sent notice is, and if they don't comply with that, it goes to court. So during that process, we've had a number of items go to court where we had some quite substantial issues that needed to be fixed. The court does render their decision, and we have to live with what the court puts down. It, a lot of times, it's, the neighbors aren't happy about that, but there's only so much that we can do. It is the decision of the court as far as that, and it's out of our hands at that point.
Ms. Kreif, is there an appeal process? If there's something rendered by the city court that we can appeal the district if necessary?
Mr. President, the appeals process, if we would disagree with something, the city court would do would be to go to the North Dakota Supreme Court.
Okay.
The district court wouldn't be our appeals board, but the standards are challenging on appeal.
Okay. Well, we'll just have to continue to, you know, improve our process, and hopefully we'll, you know, deal with some of these residents. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Schwint? Thank you, Mr. Schwint. Next item up is Item 10, Public Issues of City Concern Not on the Agenda. If anyone has any items that were not on the agenda this evening they wish to discuss with us as commissioners, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your issue. Does anyone have any public issues of city concern that were not on the agenda? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns with the city that were not on the agenda, we'll close that. Commissioners, do you have any items that you wish to discuss before we go into executive Anything, commissioners? Not, I would look for a motion to meet an executive session under North Dakota Century Code 44-04-19.1 and 44-04-19.2 for real estate contract negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion with a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same side. We will be moving to executive. Okay, we are back in regular session. The commissioners have provided guidance and instructions to city staff how to proceed with the real estate negotiations, and they will report back to us upon their completion. Anything else, commissioners? Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We're adjourned.